Good afternoon, everybody. So we're on to our second study session of the day. Once again, going out of town this weekend. So I'm making it up with two study sessions today, two yesterday, and then two on Monday of next week. So let's get to it right here. Right on the screen in front of you is our agenda for the day. So you can see hand reading practice. Well, we'll go over my range. Then we'll hit that forum post real quick to see if anything is going on there. The one that we did earlier in the session or in the first session at redchippoker.com. And then we'll get into some lessons learned from a pokerology article about the check raise. And then, sure, we're studying about facing check raises, but let's also take this opportunity to dive into our own check raising hands, to see how we're doing it and if we're profitable with our own check raises. So that is the deal today. Um, so... Are we up and running? It just made a noise like I wasn't up and running. I apologize if you're watching this right now and things are looking good. It just made a noise for me. Well, looks like we're good. We're gonna keep going, hitting some technical difficulties today. Uh, for everyone watching that first stream earlier, sorry about those, uh, computer went down and then the power outage in the house. Crazy stuff. So we are gonna look through our hands, find some showdown hands, one of them to go through as we arrange ourselves here. I think I already have it open. Good, so this is the hand reading template that I got from Split Suit. You can get yours at splitsuit.com/templates. It's a donation thing, so you can donate as much as you want for that template. So let's see, earlier, we went through a pocket queen's hand. I think it was... On the button right there, that hand we went through. Uh, flush, we went through that one yesterday. I wanna go through some hands with some good action on street by street. Check, check, bet, bet, check on a king, jack. Uh, but we want, let's find something different here. Pocket jacks. Hey, shack, that's what we covered yesterday. Pocket jacks was another one yesterday. I didn't go through it. Bet, bet, bet on that, yeah. Let's go ahead and do this and we'll arrange myself, see what I bet three streets with, with pocket jacks here. So we'll take a look at the hand. We've gotta have flopzilla out and ready. As well as our PDF right there. Okay, so here's the hand. Looks like, uh, got a quite a loose, uh, loose, uh, loose, or tag, loose aggressive, loose aggressive, and a couple of very passive fish. Hopefully I get involved with one of these guys. Uh, 25, he limps, so we ISO raise, of course. And in case you've never seen, um, the isolation raise stat, um, we can look at it right here under this. It's isolation, it's I tie, I tie, I called it ISO, but it's not ISO, it's raised with previous limpers in. And you can see it here, it's, uh, I have it broken down. This is my positional pop-up, uh, and it's just broken down by, by street. So for myself, only 31 hands. Let's see if I've ISOed up to this point. 25% of the time, uh, from the big blind, just once from the big line, that's it. But that's the isolation raise right there. Um, it's just a common play, especially when a fish limps in and you want the fish all to yourself. You come in for a raise with, with whatever hand you have. Hopefully everyone else folds, the fish calls, and your heads up in position with the fish. And so that was the goal right here. We have a great hand, wanna see the flop with him? So $1, okay, 959. So, um, let's take a look at our range here. We're isolating from the cutoff. So we're looking at us, not our opponent here. We'll talk about the opponent a little bit when we get to some possible dead cards. We'll assign him some kind of a hand here. Um, but, uh, let's see here. Our opening range in the cutoff is 20%. Now, what we're, we're also trying to isolate this passive fish, right? So when I isolate, I definitely have a wider range. Because, uh, you know, I'm in the cutoff, it's also a steal. If everybody folds and I just take the hand, or I take the pot down with my hand, that's a great result as well, because I'm in a steal spot. Might as well go for that steal sometimes, you know? Uh, so this is the range I'm gonna give myself. Let's, uh, I'm not gonna go down any further on the, not the queens, not the suited connectors. I will do a couple more offsuit. Uh, let's do all the broadways, cuz I can have those in my range for sure. So we've got for our range 430, uh, 430 combos at a 32.4% range. Good. Oh, hand number, let's put these details in. The date of this hand was for, oh, just yesterday. Nice. Uh, so the notes that I'm putting in, in here. I'm ISO raising, so my cutoff range is a bit wider than normal. But my pocket jacks is a value raise anyway. So I could have been bluffing here, but I'm not. I'm obviously going for value in this instance. I'm just trying to get rid of these extra, extra things I don't need. Clutter my vision here. Alrighty, so, um, we've got the pocket jacks. He calls us, what, what does he limp and then call us with? Well, uh, let's just give, just guess anything. Pocket fours, we'll say. I have no idea. Pocket fours might be it. It doesn't really matter right now, we're arranging ourselves, but let's give him something, just so that the, so that the, the whole flopzilla equation works and all the equities and stuff. So pocket jacks, they all fold, he calls, which is great. Now, on a 959 spade, spade, club. Is the board right there. Our pocket jacks has really good equity, I'm pretty darn sure. But, um, at this point, with, with our wide range, we have 50% versus an under pair right there. Um, but, you know, we know that we have jacks, we have a really good hand. Let's see, if this was our full range, what am I doing on this board? Well, this is a chicken board and really, I am betting just about 100% of my range here. I know that this guy is a passive fish. 4318, loves to call, probably not folding so much, uh, only 24% and 17. But this is a really hard board to hit. I could imagine he's only continuing with a couple of spades, um, some, any kind of pocket pair. But he's probably folding all of his king deuce offsuit and, and maybe calling with like an ace four offsuit kind of a thing. But he's folding a lot of stuff, should be folding. His queen eights that he called with and whatever, because he's super passive, should be folding. So I'm saying, oh, first, let's look at our bet and our bet sizing. 176 into 235, what is that? Looks like three quarter pot. Three quarter pot, yep. So we make a three quarter pot bet. Uh, that sizing says value to me. I'm going for value most likely here. So quads I'm betting, full houses I'm betting, three of a kind I'm betting, over pairs I'm betting, pocket pair below, um, yeah, definitely betting those, cuz I'm not gonna put him on a nine automatically or just put him on an over pair. He could have one, but I'm gonna be betting these for value right here. Um, because if he does call, he's calling with a really wide weak range. Middle pairs, am I betting all those fives? I think I'm betting that one street. Now, all the weak pairs, all those under things, I think I'm checking behind quite often there. Ace highs, I'm checking, they might be in my draws, but ace highs I'm checking, no made hands, checking as well. Flush draws, let's bet those. Open, under, none. Gut shots, uh, let's totally bet those, yeah, definitely. We have value and it's a chicken board, he should be folding all of his whiffs. Over cards, hmm, I'm betting those, definitely. We could hit it, uh, you know, with any of those, we have, whatever our two cards are, we have six outs to a top pair hand that can continue to bet for value. So we're betting over cards. Two card backdoors? Yeah, sure, couple of clubs, I would be betting those as well, yeah. And then if I get a lot of kickback, I'm folding with a lot of that stuff. So really, I'm betting about 73% of my range on this board right here, I would say. And that feels really accurate, that's what I would do, that's how I would proceed. With those weak pairs, I have some kind of showdown value and the ace highs could turn into something if I hit a pair, um, if I don't have any backup equity with a draw. And we get a call, okay. So is he calling here with pocket fours on the 995? Let's give him something like, just something a little better, queen 10 suited. Uh, just so we can see what's going on. So we have our nines, oh, but we have a full house now, geez, on this board. Oh, before we enter that, this is our range. 67.8% and 244. So we've effectively narrowed ourselves with our flop action by 67%. Pre-flop range. Yep, I'm checking behind weak showdown hands and complete whiffs here. Okay, so let's take a look at this nine of diamonds, was it? Nine of diamonds. So three diamonds on the board. We're repping a really strong range right here. Um, we have a ton of over pairs in our range, as we can see, a lot of under pairs as well. We have a decent number of nines, so we could have hit quads and we could have full houses right now. Uh, he just checked, called on that chicken board. He could have a nine as well, just slow playing. He could even have a set of fives for a forfeited full house now. He had a full house, now he has an under full, not as strong as before. So, um, he can put us on a really strong range, but he called on the flop, on that tough to hit flop. Let's definitely go for value if he checks to us here. And good, we bet 440, which looks like it's probably three quarters again, 44587. Three quarters again, exactly, good. And what does he do? He just calls us, okay, so what do we make of this bet? We're, if we bet on the flop and he called, we're definitely betting on the turn with any kind of quads, uh, full houses, we're betting again, which we obviously have, but we would bet, even if it was nines full of sixes, nines full of fives, we'd be betting right here. Uh, the over pairs, let's go in and bet again, cuz, you know, those are full houses, basically anyway. Pocket pair below trips. Well, it is the trips, but it is a full house, so we do wanna keep those in our range as well. Uh, the middle pairs, those are just all those fives. We have a full house, we might as well bet again. We're only losing if we have a five, we're only losing to a better pair or a nine. So we wanna bet right here, get value out of all of his really weird, weak cards that he might be calling. Um, over cards. Now, he's a calling station. He obviously does not like to fold, as we can see, 24% and 17% fold to c bet. I would not be betting my over cards, I wouldn't be betting my no made hand either. So in this instance, we've actually narrowed our range quite heavily to basically just some good value stuff, you know? Um, quads, full houses, uh, under full, nines full of fives, all that. So 72% and 30.8. Or 72 hands, I mean to say. And this is our range. Narrowed to all value hands, because I am checking behind at this point. If I have a lot of those whiffs and stuff, um, I'm checking those behind, for sure. What was it, 129? Yeah, so a ton of combos right there. 162 combos I am checking behind in this instance, because he doesn't like to fold. So why double barrel? Even though the board is scary, why double barrel, you know? Um, we all know that when there is a pair on the board, it's not so likely your opponent has, uh, the third card, right? Now that there's trips on the board, it's really not likely your opponent has four of a kind. So if you weren't scared of the pair on the board, you're often not gonna be scared of the trips, definitely not. Um, so if he's calling, let's actually switch this to like some kind of mid pair. Um, yeah, let's just give him sevens or something. So he has a full house, but it can be a weaker full house if we've got pocket aces or kings, which is in our range, right there. Good, now our river range, what happens? River the three, oh, so if he had any flush draws, he ended up hitting. Uh, three of spades. On that three of spades, with our range versus a full house, we actually have 62% equity, because most of our range is a full house right now, which is great. He, I bet he checks, I believe he checks, he checked, and then we bet seven. So we decreased our bet sizing. That could look like half pot exact, half pot exactly. It could look like I'm, uh, slowing down and I'm scared, I just wanted to throw out a cheap bluff. But what this really is, is I'm betting because I want him to call or come over the top. I want him to think that we have absolutely nothing and we're bluffing him and he's calling right here. Hopefully he has some random five or a three or any of these pocket pairs for an under full house, is what we're hoping for, and that he'll actually call. If he shoves, I'm definitely calling my $8 behind, there's no way I'm folding right here. Uh, so 733, he calls. I think that realistically, we are betting all of our full houses. I mean, that's basically what we're doing, we're betting 73 combos right here. The same exact set of hands that saw the river is betting the river, no differences. So same combos from the turn are betting when checked to on this river. Foh, show. So we've got a really strong range, because we bet three streets on a really scary board. Um, let's see, what does he do? Oh, he called, we already saw that, he called, yeah, obviously. Um, so I'm gonna assume it's a hand like this. I mean, maybe he even called with that queen, what did I say? Queen, jack, or queen set, queen 10 before, which we obviously beat. He's got a, he's got a full house now, or, I mean, a flush, which we obviously beat. But, um, yeah, let's say it's some, some kind of crazy stupid draw that he, he called three streets on, a flush draw on the flop, maybe for, uh, possibly. Well, king three. Really? King three, how do you call? What, you think I'm barreling with a, with a queen? Or you're just calling in hopes to hit a king or a three that I have, I have ace, king, or ace, queen, or something? And then you hit your full house, so of course you give value. Wow, now this is a great player. I've gotta make a note of that. Wow. Super station. Don't bluff. So when a guy is willing to call on a super scary board with no draw whatsoever, other than, you know, six outs for a full house, um, when he's only calling with that, you've got to just value bet him. Don't bluff him, because he's not folding, for sure. So I gotta make sure I keep that note. But, uh, actually, that hand went really well, I like it. I mean, I like my play the whole way, I didn't get my full stack in. I, I guess I could have bet more on the river and gotten more out of him if I would have shoved, who knows if he would have called, but, you know, I like that I got pretty good value out of that hand off the guy. Alrighty, so and then we took our range down from 430 down to 73 combos. Like, he should have, he should have known that he was beat right there. I mean, even just that five, even if I had a five on the flop, um, I would have beaten him by the river right there. Uh, there, he had no business beating in that hand, but I'm thankful those players exist, for sure. Alright, so I would call that some good, successful hand reading. I liked it. Pocket jacks. Looking at my range. Let's call that a successful hand reading. 12, even though we're reading ourselves, I still say it's successful, we did a good job there. So, um, oh, I wanted to visit that red chip poker forum to see what happens, or what's happening. See if we have any responses. So this little thing right here tells us if we had any responses. Adam Wheeler commented, Split Suit commented, oh, Split Suit commented, nice, let's take a look. And actually, honestly, I already saw that Split Suit, uh, commented. So let's see, we posted that hand earlier, should we go for value on this river? And what range does the opponent have? Split Suit said it's three-handed, so I would not assume his small blind re-shove, re-shove, re, re-steal range is what it normally is when the table's full. I would gladly forebet this pre-flop and go from there. That said, as played, this is a mandatory bet on the river. Yep, you got looked up by some middle pairs and if he folds, you don't have to show your hand, win, win. I agree, absolutely, and I just said, thanks, to Split Suit right there. He said, you're welcome. At Split Suit as president, oh, well, that's all the responses so far. I agree, Adam Wheeler, what he says goes, for sure, I could never fault that. And I agree, now looking back at it. And that's a good point that he made, too. Three-way or three-handed pots, those tags are gonna be more aggressive, cuz they're assuming that me being the opener, uh, I'm just bluffing a whole ton. So he's re-bluffing us a ton, or re-stealing, as, as Split Suit said. So I like that, but we will come back and revisit it tomorrow morning, uh, to see if anybody said anything else, ya know? So that's that, okay. So earlier, uh, I studied this article from pokerology.com, all about the check raise. And then, uh, we'll, we'll talk about what I learned from the article and then we'll get into some of my own check raising hands. Instead of looking at my opponent's check raising, uh, or me facing the check raise, I'll look at what I do or how I do it myself. So the basic idea behind this article and behind the check raise is you've got a great hand and you're out of position. You check to induce action and you come in for a raise once somebody bets in order to get extra value from them. Most check raises are made by sets and nut straights and flushes, that's what the article said. And I would agree, oftentimes you do see really strong two pairs check raising as well, and I would add, add that in. Let me go and add that in for myself. Yep, see those as well, and I know from experience, I check raise with two pair and top pair, top kicker as well. Now, just trying to get value from oftentimes those over pairs, like if I expect my opponent to have like aces, kings, queens, whatever, because of the pre-flop action or the type of player there. If I hit six, seven, or if I have six, seven, and I hit two pair, I'm gonna be check raising right there to get value out of their over pair, for sure. Um, you have a choice when you flop strong, you can bet or you can check raise. So the earlier you act, the easier it is to check raise. So if you're five-handed and you flop a flush, uh, you know, with four other players and if you're first to act, you can check, one of those four should be betting, giving you that chance to check raise. More opponents means a better chance of one of them firing at the pot. But the thing is, uh, for me especially, six max games, full ring sometimes, but six max, you don't often see multi-way pots. Maybe three players, hardly ever four or more, it's normally heads up pots. So when you plan on check raising, um, you're probably the pre-flop caller, you hit super strong and your opponent likes to c bet a lot. So you check to them with that, uh, with that idea in mind. Uh, and then you wanna look for opponents who like to bet when checked to. Um, Lou Krieger was the one who wrote this article and Lou Krieger, I think he plays mostly just live games. And in live games, we all know, tons of limping, tons of min raises and a lot of people calling. So if you happen to see a really cheap flop in the blinds and flop strong, that's a good opportunity, live, to check raise for sure, cuz so many other people are often in the pot. Um, let's see, general, general rule, commit to check raising, actually, let's do this. Make it a little bit bigger for you to see. Okay, general rule, commit to check raising only if you believe you'll have the best hand when you get called and you believe your opponent will bet if you check to him. So you need those two different things to be in the mix. Uh, if his call means he has better than you, then don't check raise. If on whatever the board is, uh, if he's only calling with top set and you have bottom two pair or top two pair, you shouldn't be check raising right there. Basically, you're going for value, and when you're going for value, you want them to call with worse. If they're only calling for, calling with better, then you shouldn't be value betting or check raising in this instance. Uh, but you can bluff check raise when you believe your opponent can fold better hands. Just standard going for value or going for a bluff. What you do should be based on what your opponent is capable of doing right now. Uh, examples in the article that he gives is having the nut flush blocking ace on a three flush turn card. Because he can't have the nuts nor a flush draw, your check raise may get him to fold. Um, in the example he gave, your opponent doesn't likely have a flush draw, cuz they wouldn't have played the flop that way. Uh, if he won't bet and you check to him for whatever reason, you're better off betting to get at least some value from him. So if you know your opponent is flop honest and they always check unless they hit and that flop is kind of hard to hit, um, then you want to bet to try to get some value out of the guy, especially if he's not gonna be betting unless he hit. So, um, bet in order to avoid letting him get a free turn by checking behind. Now, here's two really good questions. If the answer is a definite yes to these two questions, then a check raise is a good play. Are you sure, are you sure you'll have the best hand if your opponent calls your check raise? If you know you're best, check raise. If you check, will your opponent bet? If you know he's gonna bet because he c bets a ton, then check. There you go, answer to yes to those two questions. And this was interesting to think about. Um, straights are easier to check raise than flushes, because players are more leery of the flush card hitting and straights are better disguised. Oftentimes, your straights are like, you know, the jack nine on an eight, 10, queen kind of a board, you know? And so it's a little bit more disguised. When your opponent sees three, three spades out there, automatically they think, oh, oh, he hit his flush. But when suddenly that middle card 10 comes in to fill your gut shot, he's not gonna automatically put you on a straight draw that hit. So it's easier to check raise those. Uh, let's see here, you can semi-bluff and get aggressive with your flush draws, though. This gives you fold equity as well as hides the fact that you have a drawing hand. By playing your semi-bluffs aggressively, you might convince your opponent you've got a top pair hand, or we're just trying to make a bluff. When you hit on the next street, they'll be surprised by your check raise, for sure. So play those draws aggressively, then when you hit and it looks like the draw should be a scary card to you, check, they bet, you raise, they won't see the flush coming. Uh, another benefit to check raising your semi-bluff is it feels super strong to your opponent. So it gives you fold equity, they'll be scared and check behind the next street, giving you a free river card. But if your opponents are brain-dead, and that's a term Lou Krieger used, then don't try these fancy moves on them. The more fishy and weak your opponents are, the more straightforward you should be playing. Thinking players are more easily deceived than the weak fish as they just play their cards and the board. And don't think much about what they're repping, those weak fish, you know? Or about what you're repping, yep. When you're up against a maniac, you don't need to set up any fancy plays, just let him get aggressive and just fight right back with some good check raises or raising if you're in position. Versus fish, don't bother check raising, just bet, bet, bet for value. Those are really good, um, really good points right there. So let's go ahead and look at our own check raising instances, uh, see if we can't find any, any good information, you know? Uh, we'll just look at the flop for now. So obviously, we checked the flop, but then we came in for a little two bet, the first flop raise. So we check opponent c bet, which was the first bet, we come in for the raise right there. Uh, add that to filter, check, flop, and raise. So when I check raise, that's 33 instances at... I don't remember if that was what it was. 714, or 715, had the numbers flipped. 715 big blinds per 100, okay, pretty darn good. So what we can do is we can go through and take a look, it's 33 hands. I'm not gonna go through all of these right now, we'll do some more filtering. But, um, first off, it looks like all of my check raising, of course, it comes mostly from the small blind and big blind. From the MP, um, haven't done any from the early position, I guess. Uh, and then, uh, none in the cutoff either. The cutoff, you know, the only person you could check raise is the button, so that limits it. But the more hands that you see out of position, which is the blinds or where you're gonna get most of your check raises from. So let's just take a look at, uh, our biggest winner in the big blind. Ace high flush right here, let's see what happened. Oh, one-on-one. Hmm, ace deuce, two pair, nice. We check, he bets, we raise, and it's a min race, so I'm just going for straight value right here. We're heads up, the guy's loose aggressive, he could have anything, and I'm just hoping he calls with something. He called, good, oh, nice, we still have two pair, picked up the nut flush draw. We check, and he checks behind, you know, this was the instance because we checked on the prior street, or, uh, hold on a second, because... This is gonna be a lessons learned from reviewing hands. Cool. So that was, that was a mistake right there, checking, I should have bet right there just to get value, should have bet even just 225, exactly half pot or something. Because maybe he does have a random ace, um, that is just coming along. Maybe he does have a six, maybe he has seven, nine that he just hit for two pair. Whatever it is, maybe he just has, um, you know, ace, X of hearts. Maybe he had like ace of diamonds, jack of hearts or something that he's willing to call once again, because he has a top pair, a good kicker, but also the flush draw. So I, I screwed up, I missed out on value right there. Um, so check, good, so, um, that's fine. We showed weakness on the turn, so we checked, hoping that he would bet. And it was probably, hmm, he only bet $1.50. If he's only betting a buck fifty, he doesn't like his hand that much. I think we should have just let out with 225, maybe a $3 bet at two-thirds pot to get value right there. But we made it four, does he call? Hey, nice, if I would have bet four bucks, I bet he would have folded. But because I check raise, I actually made more on this river right here. Oh, pocket tens. How'd that happen pre-flop? Oh, he raised and we just called, and we just called. Oh, he raised and we just called, and we just out-flopped him, okay. Good, good, good. So that's a great hand right there. What about our biggest loser in this position? Ace queen. Losing with the check raise. Oh, I remember, we went over this hand in a hand-reading exercise, hmm, in week one, maybe. Um, yeah, so I remember I screwed this up right here. It definitely should have been a three-bet squeeze. For whatever reason, I was playing passively, should not have been, though. Um, check, check, bet, and that's good check raise right there, I'm down with that. Even though it is a scary board to be doing it, king-ten hits a straight, um, ace X of hearts has a flush draw. Um, set of jacks I could be up against as well, or queens, or even aces from this guy right here. He opened, we just called. I mean, there's a lot of hands that beat top two pair right now. So uh, I'm not a fan of, of, uh. I'm not a fan of not three-betting pre to give us a better idea. If I would have three-bet pre, I would have, um, raised. I would have led out here, and then he probably would have made the same play, so everything would have still ended up the same. But it just, it would have been a better situation to three-bet pre-flop. Uh, wow, he, oh, that's right, he had king-ten, he flopped a straight. So if I would have three-bet pre. There's a very good chance he would have folded, and I would have just taken it down with a three-dollar bet. It wouldn't have been a big pot one, but it would have been not. It would have been better than losing this big pot. Yep, so I screwed that check raise up. Let's look at the small blind here. Biggest losing hand. Looks like I'm check raising a flush draw probably. Ace-seven, I'm not a fan of open and then calling here. Nope, nope, nope. What is he, three-bet in the small blind, or in the big blind? Three bets nine percent of the time, that's a pretty wide range. I think I'd be better off coming over with a six-dollar. Uh, maybe five-fifty to six-dollar four-bet to take it away from him. I think that would have been a better play. I don't like the call. I, I like four-betting or folding. So, we raise and then just called. Do we really have aces, kings, or queens here? No, we don't. Knowing me, the type of player I am, no, look at that. Twenty-five percent four-betting, one out of four, yeah, I like to four-bet. I would have four-bet with aces, kings, or queens. Um, he makes a tiny little bet here. I think that's why I did what I did. So I decided to check raise to try to represent strength. But he's probably betting small on purpose because he's got us crushed and he wants us to raise. Uh, or he was just going for value there. So the queen hits the king, uh, I, I really don't know what he has, but I think I misplayed this pre-flop. But he definitely has us beat, I mean, we just have an ace, we should have followed it up with a turn bet if anything. If we were check raising. As a bluff on that flop, we've gotta follow it up on the turn, because we're check raising because we think he can have worse. Um, and doesn't. Necessarily mean that he had the king just cause he called. And he does have the king, yep, right there. And he's king, even on that jack-jack-eight board, he was calling one street. I bet if he didn't hit a king. Uh, if we would have bet, he would have folded that turn if that queen were here instead. Although it would give him a gut shot, he might still call. Yeah, so I don't like that. It's, it wasn't a good board, I completely whiffed. I don't think, um. I've, I've, does, uh, I've explained it before, but equity outs are when the next card, when there's a lot of different cards that can come and help you. Normally, when we think of outs, we think of, oh, I have a gut shot, there's four different, uh, sevens that can come to help me make my gut shot. Well, equity outs are a little bit different, so, uh, it's without flops though, it's the easiest way to do it. So let's say we have nine-eight, uh, suited, for example, um, yeah, just nine-eight suited, on a, uh, we'll go six, seven. Five-six deuce board, okay. So, right now, we have the over cards, right, uh, plus the gutter. Let's say it was the nine-eight of diamonds. Actually, we can even just go over here so we can see them a little better. So we have the nine-eight of diamonds, we've got the gut shot, straight flush draw. Um, if we check raise here and he calls, there's a lot of turn cards that can help us. A nine at least gives us a pair, so if he's calling with ace-king like in that instance just now, uh, at least now we paired up and we have showdown value. So a nine helps, and eight helps us. Um, a seven also helps us, just because it pairs that top card. And a lot of opponents who called, because we bet, it's very possible we have a top pair hand, another seven would give us trips. So nine, eight, seven, of course, the six makes our hand, and any diamond is good as well. And even a ten makes us open-ended. A jack gives us another gut shot with the ten coming. So there's seven different cards that can come. All those different numbers, and then the diamonds, which make a hand or add equity and give us an additional out. So those are equity outs right there. We have seven in this instance. So, at a time like this, I'm definitely down with check raising as a semi-bluff. But, on this one board. Nine-nine-five, was it? Oh no, jack-jack-eight, nine-nine-five was the other one. And we have the ace-seven of spades. I mean, what do we have? We have nothing right here. We don't wanna see, um, sure, a nine gives us. Actually, eight, seven, eight, actually, no, nothing. We don't really even wanna see an ace. Because he has, he three-bet us pre-flop, he has every better ace in his range, ace-king, queen, jack-ten, even ace-nine is, is in his range as a three-bet hand. Um, and then, of course, so if he hit an ace, we could be beat. If we hit a seven, it's just an under pair to the board. Uh, if we hit a ten or a nine, it doesn't even really add seven, eight, yeah, it doesn't add much equity, just adds a crappy gut shot. So, this is a terrible spot, because we just can't, we can't fire on a lot of turns. The more turns you can barrel on, the more pressure you can put on your opponent, the more likely you can get a fold when you're bluffing. So yep, we screwed that hand up. Uh, so that's the ace-seven. Let's look at the biggest winner in the small blind. Ooh, nice, king-queen. Uh, Gary Wheat, tag player, nineteen-twelve, he's a good one to definitely call. He'll probably play a little straightforward post-flop. Uh, so we called with a great hand, could have three-bet, chose the call. You can see I'm playing nitty at this table. Thirty-six hands, let's see, we have a super loose aggressive, loose passive, tag, tag, tag. I think, uh, my whole goal at this hand was to get involved with these guys as much as possible. Um, so I, maybe I was just playing tag. Uh, yeah, probably should have been playing more aggressive to get involved with them. So, flop in the two pair, we check because the button is right here. Check, and uh, he bets a full pot. Now, that is a really wet board, um. But this still deserves, cause he just opened up pre-flop, he could have king-ten, he could have queen-ten, he could have ace-king, could have pocket jacks. For a, uh, for an open ender, could have pocket tens for an under set, and we have outs to beat that. Sure, pocket kings and queens he beats, but is he really betting full pot with pocket kings or queens here? I doubt it, I think we have the best hand here. But I think he has plenty of weaker two pairs, as well as kings, and even a random jack that he could be calling with. Um, so I love the three-bet because it's for some really good value. And then he comes over the top of us, and then we decide just to call. I think my call right there is simply just slow-playing my hand. I don't think that he necessarily has the best hand here always. I think he can try to re-bluff us at this point. So, um, uh, and maybe it's kind of like stubborn calling as well. But I'm good with that, and I would have been good with a shove as well. So I check, he bets, and then we auto-call right there. Um, I guarantee I was not check folding. I mean, he bet to put me all in. There's no way I was folding. I was letting him come in. Hopefully, he just has an ace-king or a random jack here for a draw. Oh, ace-jack, so he flopped his straight, um, which got me good. I mean, I didn't think that he would bet so hard with a straight, to bet full pot. Um, and then we rivered him right there. So we got it in, and we got it in on the river when we hit. Yep, so I'm sure he wasn't happy to see that rivered, uh, that rivered, uh, a pair of the board. Definitely not. Cool beans, so yeah, things went really well on that hand. Good check raise opportunity, I think. Um, and then when he raised, I don't think that necessarily means I am beat. Um, so I'm fine with the call, you know, I would have been fine with a three-bet as well. Uh, so those were those hands. So let's see here now, um, so we're thinking about check raise. Hands, how can we further narrow this down here? Um, cause we've got all of these hands here. Uh, when we check raise ourselves. Well, I mean, it's only thirty-three hands, we don't really need to do some further filtering here, um. Actually, yeah, let's go ahead and do that. So more filters, let's add to filters when we're check raising with our sets. Now, by just choosing pairs, I'm gonna assume they're all sets here. I mean, some of them might be check raising like an open ender or something, quite possibly, or even an over pair. Oh, actually, so if we wanna do that, we might as well just do made hands. Three of a kind. Any set. On the flop is what we wanna look at. Okay, let's take a look at our check raise flops, uh, check raise sets on the flop. Okay, seven hands total. We've made quite a bit of money, no losing hands probably. No losing hands, yep, yep. So let's see, let's take a look at some of these hands where we only made. That's not really a set, but it is three of a kind kings. We didn't make much money on these two hands, why didn't we? Uh, it's very possible that check raising on these two hands is a bad idea, because. Remember these questions right here. Are you sure you'll have the best? No. Uh, if you check, will your opponent bet? It's, it's quite possible that, um. Wait, no, we did check raise. So why didn't we make so much here? I guess we check raised, so this is what I wanna look at. So, um, we're check raising, we didn't make much value, why is that? What happened to not give us value? Why didn't our opponent pay off? So because they didn't pay us off, maybe we should just check called and then donk-led the turn. Maybe we should just bet out and let them raise us as a bluff on the flop. Um, oh, so we just got a tiny from a loose aggressive player, semi-loose aggressive. Great, so trip kings, not too scared. Okay, look at that. So he makes a tiny bet on a chicken board. This guy obviously does not like his hand. He's running a cheap bluff here. Oh, we don't raise it by that much, does he? He calls, good. So then the ace hits, the board gets even scarier. Let's say he had here, because he opened, let's say he had pocket fives, or pocket nines, or even pocket. Pocket, like, uh, eights or sevens, um. Or even a queen-ten, I guess it has a gut shot. But so we check raised, and then we led out, and then he calls, oh, that's a good, that's good. Then the four comes, oh, and then we checked with the hopes of check raising right there. I doubt I put him on a better king than me. Oh, we'll never know what he had. So he obviously didn't have a king, um. He didn't have ten-jack, cause that would have beat me, I just had trip kings. Yeah, so he obviously bet and then called with some kind of a draw? I mean, maybe he had ace-ten. For, he had a gut shot, hit a pair, and then had a gut shot on the turn as well. Yep, yep. So I don't think, we probably weren't getting much money from him regardless. The raisin that we call, okay, six-five deuce is a really hard flop to hit, even though this guy is super, um, loose. He has a ton of over cards that do not like this flop at all. So he bets seventy-five percent. We come in for the min raise and he folds. So he automatically just put us on a set. Maybe he had like queen, I don't know, queen-eight offsuit. And hit nothing on that, and he was just c-betting it. Yeah, so it's a shame, didn't make much money there. Uh, that was one hand where we made a big score. Four hands. Oh, so we made some money. So these three, let's see why we did not make any money on these hands. Bottom set, okay, good. Now, he bets ninety-two percent of the time. This is a perfect guy to be, uh, to be check raising. Cause, once we check raise, he could come over the top with, with a, some kind of a ten. Uh, or he could just call and just give us value with his top pair and our set. So we come over the top, and then he calls, good. Now the four hits, good, we continue with our, with our aggression here, hoping that he'll, hoping that it'll call. And he folds, yeah. So in this instance, let me see here, what do we learn here? If you think he's folding to your check raise. Then. Either lead out or check call. Then get. Aggressive on the turn, yep. I think that's right. Cause you ultimately, when you're making a value bet, you want them to be able to call. And so this check raise is a value check raise. It worked on the flop, but let's see what happens here on the turn. Oh, we already saw it, on the turn, uh, it didn't work. Uh, well, my, my lead didn't work, so he took one chance on the first street, at least we got some value out of the guy. Uh, so that probably wasn't a bad play right there. Now, let's see here, call, da-da-da-da-da. Ooh, that's not the worst of boards to be check raising. This guy c-bet sixty percent of the time. Uh, so, let's see what happens. One dollar, good, two-thirds pot. Ooh, we come in for almost three-X on a deuce-ten-eight, he's gonna put us on a set. He is, I think we could have come in for a min raise, or even like two-point-two-five, instead of two-point-seven-five. And we got folds right there, yeah. Um, that's not the easiest of flops to hit, sure, you could have jack-nine for an open ender, you could have a couple of clubs. But other than that, you got a lot of weak pair hands, um, in the ranges, right there. So, uh, I should not have check raise, I should just donk-led at it, let him maybe raise us by donk-leading. Pocket three, it's probably the same thing happens. So, it's a tough flop to hit really hard, couple of clubs for a flush draw, five-six for an open ender, uh. You don't expect queen-four or queen-three in his range. Right, I mean, I raised and he called, I guess queen-three or queen-four, he does call quite a bit, there's a big gap between, um. But possibly not, I mean, what can give me value? I'm basically, uh, check raising here, in the hopes of he has a queen and is getting it in with his short stack. And I check raise the two bucks, and he just folds, he just, it, it was really easy on that flop for him to give up anything but a queen, yep. Kind of an easier way to say, say this hand right here. If it's easy for your opponent to fold to your check raise, don't make it, totally. To your value, check raise. Alrighty, so I think that's good for the day, everybody. Thank you very much for joining me on this, uh, the second stream of the day. Mid-afternoon, hmm, lunchtime stream, I guess we can call it. But uh, thank you very much, I'll be sending out the email with today's two streams and everything that we discuss. In just a little bit. Alrighty, thank you much, take care, bye.